Good evening. It's Tuesday, June 25th, 2024. Welcome to the committee of the whole meeting. I'm going to call our meeting to order at 6:30 PM. We're going to start with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Moving on to our land acknowledgement. The municipality of Port Hope exists on the lands of the Michisagik Anishinaabe traditional territory covered by the Williams Treaties. We honour and recognise First Peoples as rights holders and stewards of the lands and waters on which we have the privilege to live, work and play, including the Gannarasque River and forest. We pay respect to elders, past, present and emerging. We commit towards actions. We commit to actions towards truth and reconciliation by recognising the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, strengthening ties with First Nations, Métis and Inuit peoples, especially those who make their home in Port Hope, and learning from indigenous ways of knowing and being. We do so by recognising the past and working towards a shared future. Moving on to our second item this evening, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? I note that none were received in advance of the meeting, seeing none around the table. Moving on to item number three, correspondence. We have no correspondence this evening. Moving on to item four, items for consideration, report 4.1 FS0924 Re- amend bylaw 632019, imposition of development charges to delete bylaws expiry. Does staff have anything further that they would like to add before we consider this report?
So I can just speak briefly to it if you'd like. As you may recall, when we had the initial development charges information kickoff meeting for council, it was identified that there was currently some proposed provincial legislation that would change kind of the framework at that time. That is now passed in June. And so we're looking to do is instead of just, you know, plowing forward with what we had and then having a statutory meeting and then it's kind of changing. We keep talking about this is what we have, but it's going to change and potentially having to come back and go through the process again. We essentially just kind of hit pause. We want to go update the, do an addendum to update the current study and kind of go through and do it properly, all amended. So that's going to be the most efficient and hopefully the easiest for people to be able to follow and understand and be able to participate. In order to do that, we don't want to no longer have development charges for a period of time and our current development charge bylaw expires at the beginning of August. So in order to facilitate the time to be able to do that addendum and incorporate the changes, the legislation allows us to be able to essentially, you know, delete or more technically go back and repeal the expiry clause from our existing one. So we remove that expiry clause. Technically that would, we could, that would buy us another five years. We're just planning on essentially coming back in the fall after we've kind of had our summer break and we will then have our statutory meeting and go through the process as we normally would and we'll give notice, one of the extension of the current DC bylaw and also before we have our next statutory meeting. So it just allows us to be able to respond and update and do this as efficiently as we can so that it's correct, you know, when we pass it as opposed to moving forward with something with things changing and then having to come back around to do an update almost immediately to be able to incorporate the provincial part. So ask your support, you know, in that. And our first step, which is before tonight, is just to be able to update our current bylaw to be able to remove the August expiry.
Thank you for that very clear explanation and summary. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this? Okay. So then the recommended action is listed on the agenda. Can I get a mover and seconder? Move by councillor Daryl, seconded by councillor Adam, all in favour? And that is passed unanimously. Moving on to report 4.2 PD1624 Re ZBO52024 zoning bylaw amendment application 79 to 81 Toronto Road. Does staff have anything further that they would like to add before we consider this report?
Through the mayor and members of council, just as a reminder, this matter came before council in a public meeting forum in May, on May 21st. It was relatively straightforward rezoning application related as a condition of a consent to sever that went to the committee of adjustment. I believe the report stands for itself, however, I am happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions, any comments? I think it's quite straightforward. Thank you. The recommended action is listed on the agenda. Can I get a mover and seconder? Move by councillor Todd, seconded by councillor Les, all in favour? And yes, absolutely. We have, we have a mover and seconder and now we're going to open it up for our last comment or question.
Sorry, I should have asked it right off the start, but I didn't. Just in the communication and public engagement, it does say that it should be noted that 85 Toronto Street is also within the comm two and therefore residential uses are not permitted. What is that really?
What does it really mean? So the, so I think really that's a reflection of in the public meeting, we had one person who made public comment and their response, their question of the, or query at the time was that the concern with the rezoning to commercial was that they had a portion of that property was, was being inhabited as people were residing there. The, I think our sort of communication back is that that property is, is zoned commercial too, so to not permit your neighbouring property to be the same zoning, that was sort of what we were pushing back at. Whether they are living there, you know, whether there is residents there or not is not a matter for this issue or report. And in reality, there is a commercial enterprise. They may have residents above the commercial enterprise and around the commercial enterprise. Primary thrust of that property is a commercial enterprise as well.
Okay, so we had a mover and seconder and now I'll take vote, all in favour? And that is passed unanimously. Moving on then to report 4.3 PRC0824 renaming rights town park expansion project. Does staff have anything further that they would like to add before we consider this lovely?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will speak to this report. The intention of the report is to identify and celebrate a number of community contributions made to the town park recreation expansion project. The financial sponsorships of the Lions Club of Port Hope and the Port Hope Rotary Club are significant and the report outlines the naming rights provisions and requests by staff. The valued engagement and support for this project highlights its success in our community and its importance, including continued recognition of Ruth Clark in our community as highlighted in the report as well. I do want to take this opportunity to share a few statistics for your awareness, again highlighting how successful this project has been in our community. So we currently have 620 members of the 55 plus membership, which is a growth of over 172 in one year. We have had an increase of 1,459 registrations in the last year. We offer approximately 25, 25 programs and workshops a week for adults and older adults. And we offer 26 fitness classes a week for 55 plus members. They receive a 50% discount on all of our fitness classes. That's 26 fitness classes a week where last year at this time we had 12 a week. We offer six cultural programs a week and last year at this time we had one running. Our new program highlights include photography, watercolours, dot art, zumba, line dancing, Pilates, movement and music, ukulele and many more. So we had the opportunity last week to celebrate the contribution from the Lions Club of Port Hope and this Thursday we'll be doing the same with Rotary Club. And just sharing these numbers and seeing people come through the doors of this facility of our older adults, but also all ages really has been significant. So I wanted to share that while you consider this report.
Thank you. Those are, those are really impressive statistics. Yes, absolutely. I think applause, applause, applause. Well done. Wish all of our reports were such a, such a pleasure and yes, and happy news. So congratulations. Any, any questions or comments from the floor? So the recommended action is to receive this report for information. Can I ask for a mover and seconder? Move by councillor Daryl? Oh, sorry. Okay. No, 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 it's, it's, it's okay. All I have in my notes actually is that, is there anything further for discussion before we receive this report for information? So that the recommended action is not required to be read out. Okay, so can I get a mover and seconder for that? Move by councillor Les, seconded by councillor Todd, all in favour? Thank you. I get the calls, notes, instructions here, so sorry, sorry about that. But I'd be happy to say that we've got naming rights to the Port Hope Lions Club, naming rights to the Rotary Club of Port Hope for room three. The Lions Club is serving room five in the main hallway is going to be renamed the Ruth Clark Gallery for those that wanted that additional information. Moving on to report 4.4 PRC0924 Re 2024 Non Core Asset Management Plan. Does staff have anything further that they would like to add before we consider this report?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to let Jeremy, our manager of municipal assets and GIS, give a brief update on this report.
Yes, the management plans are a starting point for a conversation around the people's service objectives. These plans are about communicating what options are available and their alternatives, risks, servicing paths, and the willingness to pay to deliver those services. The plans are intended as a guiding document for long-term investment decisions that drives the same levels of service across the municipality. The plans are also a reference document for council and staff that detail current lifecycle activities to delivery services as well as levels of service with current performance metrics. The asset management plans will allow the municipality to legislate with requirements for Ontario regulation 5877, passing into a plan for the infrastructure, set the stage for municipalities to win 24 asset management plans, which will refer to both levels of service and care financial plans. Reparation of these plans was completed by internal staff and consultation of PSD Citywide for the overall asset management and maintenance management software. If you have any questions?
Thank you very much. Questions, comments from the floor? Councillor Mink?
Thank you. And thank you for this report. It's a very enjoyable read. I have a question and this, this came from a resident, but I also, I agree with this question. So throughout the documents, there is reference to climate, changing climate and protecting our assets in relation to climate changes and so on. And the question that came to me was regarding our ditches, culverts and that type of asset that helps the road infrastructure. So my question is, do we have? I noticed in, throughout this document, there wasn't a reference to any type of standard, standard operating procedures such as the road management, roadside management plan. And that plan helps protect the assets from then needing to invest as much money into them, giving them a longer life. So, and those plans do seem to get dated over time as well. So my question is, were those standard operating procedures referenced at any time? And could we, is there a way to have them referenced in this document so that we know that they are due or they can help our asset management rather than just putting money into it, we're mitigating that timeline?
I think that's a great question. Firstly, I'd like to note that these are our non-core asset management plans. Those particular pieces of infrastructure would be included within our core asset management plans, which were passed in 2022. As part of this project particularly, we did, we did work with PSD Citywide to update our core asset management plans so that they have the same look and feel as the non-core asset management plans. They were proposed to be completed and submitted with the non-core asset management plans. Unfortunately, our consultant ran into some staffing issues and were unable to meet those commitments. We're looking to have those completed in the next couple of weeks so that we will have updated metrics on our core plans as well to go along with our non-core asset management plans.
Councillor Les?
How does this tie into our budget? I mean, what are we signing on for here? And will it be contradictory to our ability to, to set our own budgets without having the government Ontario breathing over us or elder decks to be compliant with the regulations?
The asset management plans, they're not going to dictate what we can and cannot spend money on. There essentially, there's guiding principles to allow us to make better, smarter decisions over time by keeping in mind the condition of assets, the risk of asset failure and the cost to replace and maintain assets.
Will this draft or the completed document make us compliant to ask for funding and grants with the Ontario government?
Yes, it will.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. One is, are there any gaps in data that we currently have to continue to create our robust asset management plans? So in terms of moving forward, where can we get more fine grained in our data collection? Where are those gaps as you see them? Not necessarily gaps to come into compliance, but just in terms of longer term planning and also are you contemplating the use of AI in any way, shape or form in these plans?
Both great questions. The first, to answer your first question. The data gaps are primarily with regards to the state of the assets. It's, for, for many of them, we're, we're lacking updated condition assessments as well as updated replacement cost values to rather, can be rather costly metrics to, to keep updated. Those are two of the main aspects that we're looking to update going forward from, from this point in time for our 2024 asset management plans. We also have data gaps. There's certain assets simply have not, not been entered into the system yet and we're going to need to retroactively add those back in. So to answer your question, they're fairly moderate gaps at the moment, but we are aware of where they are and we have plans to move forward to closing them. To answer your second question, at this time, there's no plans on using AI to, to help us with our asset management plans. I can see it having a place in the future to create efficiencies with regards to creating data optimization and data automation so that we can automate our processes a bit quicker. But at this point in time, we're not using AI in any way to create these asset management plans.
Thank you for that. And just as a follow-up in terms of you said that there's a plan to, to reduce those data gaps, is that going to be the additional work or stress on, on staff or can we do it within our staff composition?
We can do it within our current staff composition, but to suggest that there isn't going to be stress on them during that, for that, that process would be accurate. There, I think in any, any part of this asset management plans has put stress on all departments who are already at, mostly at their limits.
Thank you. I appreciate that because I think that's something important for us to consider as we're moving forward, especially around budget discussions and we're thinking about what is the cost of either getting the data that we need to make sound longer term decisions or, or just not spending the money now for incurring more costs in the medium and long term, which we know what happens when we don't do good asset management. Councillor Clare and Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Hi. Thank you for these. My question, I have two questions. One is about, so where we go from here? I understand from the last time you were, you were in chambers with us, that there was a deadline we're working towards. This is to get us in compliance with the province. But then there's the next level, which is how do we make these as useful for us as we possibly can as a tool that is, you know, living, breathing throughout the year when we're not reporting to the province? And my question is, at what point in this process of asset management are we going to ask the question about whether we want to continue to offer this, this level of service that we currently offer? Because I know in our two budget deliberations we've had so far as a council, that seems to be sort of the primary question that we're wrestling with is maintaining our assets and actually maintaining, you know, investing in our asset management planning as opposed to pushing it off down the road. But that comes at a cost in terms of the tax levy. And so my question is, is there a plan for this to be integrated more, I guess, directly into the budget roadmap and budget deliberations? And the second part of that question is about the survey that was launched this time last year that I think was really trying to drive at that core question with the community about what do we want to have and are we willing to pay for it? And I wondered if there was any update about the results from the survey so far or how we're going to use what that survey to help inform our discussions?
Both great questions. The, to answer your first question, the 2025 asset management plans are one we're going to be putting together, the 10-year forecasts for our 10-year financial forecast as well as a review of our current levels of service over a longer period of time. At that point, we're going to be discussing whether or not we want to maintain increased or decreased levels of service. At that point, we can have a, we have an opportunity to review levels of service to decide whether or not the required funding is there to continue to operate as we are. Your second question is one that I've been considering for quite some time and it was certainly one that we considered when we started down the road of producing the asset management plans. The survey had a total respondent of, response, total response of 87 with a total unique response of 71. Unfortunately, the statistician in me didn't see that as a large enough sample size to begin making, to begin making decisions or recommendations of. Having said that, within the 24, 2025 asset management plans, we're going to be redoing the survey and sending it out again as part of that, hopefully with a higher level of engagement.
Councillor Mink?
Thank you. Just to follow up with the last comment that you have made, the surveys, there's been some interest from some members of council as well that we have a deeper level of analysis on those surveys and whether that, I think for, for staff providing us that data is definitely beneficial, but I think some people here at the table also have experience analysing data themselves. So my question would be, will we have more deeper analysis and can council members upon request get the raw data themselves to get that information and make their own conclusions and observations from that?
We can put, we can put together an analysis of the current survey. Although I will reiterate the fact that there were only 87 responses and of those 87, they came from 71 unique individuals. So I would be wary to analyse that little amount of data. We can make it available.
I, I'm going to, I saw that the CAO header, I, I'm, I'm concerned about that N because I don't think you can actually analyse that data and, and do anything that's generalisable from that small number. I mean, it would be irresponsible to do so, in fact, from a research perspective, but I think the CAO header, hand up.
Thank you, Jeremy. I just wanted to jump in here on a couple of points. I agree and I think that was Jeremy's point that he was making, that the sample size was too small to actually be able to analyse and assume and that it's representative of, of anything in order to make concrete decisions and recommendations based on that. That said, we have heard council in regards to the message that they would like to see an analytical approach to the data that is being collected and ensuring that those analytics are being provided to council post-survey. So we are, we hear you. This survey was conducted last year. It was prior to us being able to implement or prior to us even having the conversations at the council table, at least prior to my time. Maybe you were having those conversations back then, but there has been that recent commitment of council. The next survey that is to be launched is the budget survey. We will be taking, I'm taking a significant look and we'll be working with the Director of Finance and our competent communications team that have put a lot of time into the survey to date to ensure that the data that we'll be able to, that we are collecting is, is able to be analysed. The goal is that we're going to be asking all members of council to be assisting us in spreading the word when that survey is out to ensure that we get an uptake and participation. So out there kind of pounding the pavement and, and rallying the drums and beating the drums to ensure we get some participation. Obviously, we'll do everything we can on, on our end using all of our channels, but you guys and your participation goes a long way in getting residents to be able to participate in the survey. Once we provide that information back to you, I think we'll circle back to the raw, providing you with the raw data because there is the circumstance of, you know, personal information and what has been disseminated in those surveys. So we, we would have to take a look at that offline and determine what we can provide you and what we can't.
One final question from Councillor Mink and Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So yeah, and I wasn't asking for the old survey data. I was talking about if we had a new survey, so I just want to clarify that. So, well, I have sort of have two questions in one. So I think that, or some feedback, I think with the asset management plan, I, I'm not sure that it was understood by many residents that it connected with the budget. I think when you started doing it, you may have thought, oh, this has a connection to the budget if you were paying attention to the questions, but I don't think it was forthcoming that this asset management plan is relating to our budget decisions. So I think if there's a way that that could be presented in that way, that what, how you answer is how it's going to help us come to our, our decisions. And then the other question I had was AI. We were talking about AI just a couple of questions ago. Do you use AI as a survey creator? I know that, that takes out a lot of personal inclinations to direct credit questions a certain way and we did get a lot of feedback that some of the questions were leading. They, people felt they were leading and they abandoned the survey because they, they felt that they couldn't answer either way. So do we use AI to answer, to create surveys?
No, we don't utilise AI to create the surveys. That said, your commentary in previous meetings in regards to residents who are completing the feedback, surveys, their feedback is that they feel as if they are leading. I have read the questions. I think that's going to be a personal preference. I've read them, I don't find them leading, but maybe I'm not objective enough. I may be too close to the subject matter, but at this point in time, we're not using AI, but we'll, we will take a consideration and take a look at the questions through that lens at this point.
Final question from the Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, and I think it's kind of a repeat on my initial question because I appreciate what's coming for 2025. I think that's fantastic, but for the survey, I think I don't want to wait till 2025 to feel like we have a better sense of what is the pulse of this community on that core question of our current level of service and property taxes. And I think it would be really helpful to have some sense of that going into what is now our third budget where presumably that will be the hot topic of conversation at the council table once again and, and amongst, you know, SLT as well. So I, I'd love to know if there's a consideration for those kinds of bigger picture questions that inform our thinking being included in the budget survey that goes out this time. And I will also just take a moment to just to point out, which I have before, our public engagement strategy needs, needs an update. at which I have before, our public engagement strategy needs, needs an update. Because this is a question that I, I don't think there's a single person in this community who doesn't think about this question when they open their property tax bill and wonder about, are we making, you know, how are we making these decisions? And I think we need to have that check in. And so to have only eighty seven responses on something that is such a core issue in our community, to me, again, highlights that we need to do a better job of getting to where people are as opposed to waiting for them to come to us and answer our questions the way we seem to be doing.
Okay, that, for me to take that question?
Yes, I, I know that. I probably want to make a few points.
Again, to point out that that survey was a year ago. And I think there has been plenty of strides coming forward, moving forward. We have prime recent examples in regards to public engagement. Our by-election turnout is one of them. Huge, huge success, huge win. That said, we are always open to recommendations of counselors in regards to any opportunities or anything that you would like to see from a public engagement standpoint that you feel needs to be undertaken during a specific initiative. We are open ears. Please let me know and we can take it under consideration. So open door policy. On the budget survey, just to be clear, tonight's conversation is on asset management. And that piece, levels of service under asset management and levels of service during budget are two different things. And so I think it's important to, to point that out, not to, to confuse the public. Because levels of service within a service that we've already determined to provide, such as roads has a level of service. We're not going to choose to not to provide roads, but within that you need to determine what your level of service is. That means from a condition standpoint of that road. So are we going to, from an H C B, which is asphalt, are we going to do an L C B, which is like a surface treatment? Are we going to leave it gravel? You know, how many potholes does it need to have before we consider grading it? Like all of your level things that go into determining what a level of service is. When you're talking about determining levels of service towards budget, we don't get into that granular detail. We look at all of the services that are provided, that are within each division. So we take a look, so, you know, P R C, for example, we take a look at what it takes to run all the programs at the Jack Burger, at the town park on the great report that Julia gave this evening. You know, that's different than a level of service on an asset management plan perspective. So it's the same terminology, but they're very, very different. So I just wanted to make that determination in case there was any confusion. And then outside of that, when it comes to the budget survey and the levels of service, yes, there is going to be questions that are going to lean towards to get the public thinking about this, the fact that we are a service-rich community and that we provide a lot of great services to the community for a population of our size and start to gain some awareness around that and how that impacts us from a budgetary perspective and how our community feels about that. So there will be questions in regards to that.
Follow up?
Yeah, sorry. I think maybe just to be a little bit more clear in terms of the question I was asking, in the last two budgets, two budgets ago, there was a motion from the council table about funding our asset management plan, right? And that was an additional contribution to the levy to try to close that infrastructure gap. And I think that there is a gap in understanding sometimes about what we mean when we're doing that. And so I think that, that's my question. If we're saying we are funding, we are trying to close the infrastructure gap and our infrastructure gap is based on our asset management plans and our investment targets for that infrastructure, how can we incorporate the asset management plans into the budget roadmap? So that there is that clear link between the two to, to Counselor Less's question. And, and how do we make decisions at budget time? Given that our asset management plans have been built on the assumption that we want to maintain that level of service. Do you see what I mean? Which may not be in fact the will of the community.
Right. So if you're asking if we're going to include or try to close that knowledge gap of the community in regards to, yes, the last couple of budgets, there has been an increase to the budget to support the infrastructure deficit. If we're able to incorporate some questions and awareness around that in the budget survey, sure, I definitely see we can be able to do that. We can craft some questions to do that. And the asset management plan adoption, like the reading of those plans and getting some knowledge, asset management is on the budget roadmap. So we're good there. You'll see some information there coming forward and I think that's good because it's starting to feel like you and I are having a conversation during the council meeting. So I'll leave it at that.
And I know Counselor Adam has a question, but just before, or a comment. Just before, going back to the surveys and how those are used to inform some of these plans. Given, given that we have expressed concerns about surveys in the past year at the council table, are there any plans for improving how surveys are going to be developed? What kinds of questions are going to be asked and sort of to see where maybe some of the, the best practices in the field might, might sit with doing the best kinds of surveys that we can be doing with the community?
Yes. I would prefer not to get into all of what that looks like at this point in time, but yes. Because as of right now, they've remained inside the C A O's mind and hasn't been disseminated to the senior leadership team. So I would prefer to have those internal conversations before we have them externally. But yes, there's going to be some different slightly different approaches to the surveys working, I think, to be honest with you, when you look at municipalities across the board, I think we do an exceptional job with the surveys. When you compare us to public sector entities, which is what we are, when you compare us to the private sector and then you compare multiple, any municipality to the private sector, we're, you know, we're not going to measure up the same way for sure, most definitely. But we have heard counsel loud and clear. We respect that you want to see more robust surveys. You want to get analytics. You want to get data. And we're going to do whatever it takes to be able to ensure that you're comfortable and that you have the data that you need in order to make decisions.
That's terrific news. Yes, Counselor Adam.
Thank you. So just to have a couple of quick comments here. The first one, Jeremy. Incredible. You've done, you've done a lot of really good work and really appreciate the hard work. I, I know how, how many hours you put into this. So thank you. And Candace, having the knowledge that you have on this to answer our questions is wonderful to see. I just wanted to highlight one spot, which is in the facilities on page eleven, I believe it is. And it's just the acquisition of capital assets that account for only ten to twenty percent of the cost of the ownership and the remaining eighty to ninety percent is the maintenance and the operation of it. And just something to, to have sit in our minds. And so again, we are going to go into much of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the recommended action is to receive this report for information. Can I get him for a second, Jer, on this?
My apologies, Madam Mayor. The recommended action is listed on the agenda.
So, yeah. So, need to read instead of no need to read? Okay.
Thank you.
So, that's okay. The recommended action is that council approve the four new twenty twenty four municipality port hope asset management plans for non-core infrastructure assets, including facilities, fleet and fleet equipment, land improvements and machinery and equipment. Now I'm going to ask for a move for a second, or move by Counselor Todd, second by Counselor Adam, all in favor? All in favor? And that is passed unanimously. Moving on then, we have no notice of motions this evening. We do have a number of updates and new business, starting with Canada Day, July first, twenty twenty four. This year's Canada Day celebration in Memorial Park promises to be a memorable one, blending cherished traditions with exciting new additions. Join us on July first for a day packed with activities for all ages. For car enthusiasts, don't miss the show and shine car display. And of course, the parade will still be highlighting, will still be a highlight featuring your wonderful council and an adjusted route to accommodate the Walton Street reconstruction. So for more details and updates, visit the municipal website. A second update, which is around end of the school year. As we end the school year, I want to congratulate all of our twenty twenty four graduates. As you step into the next chapter of your lives, embrace the challenges and opportunities that lie ahead with confidence and courage. The world awaits your unique contributions and we hope that you bring them all back to your community for it. Go forth and make a difference. I have a number of other updates from, from myself on behalf of the, the county and as well as some other local issues. The first, I'm going to start with the Via commuter train. As many of you know, the commuter train has returned to the community, which was a very exciting event for all of those who advocated for it. I understand from the community that there have been some challenges with the schedule and the arrival times. And I just want to assure you that I'm working with all the different levels of government to press on this issue to make sure that the schedule works for those who actually need to be in Toronto by nine o'clock in the morning. Please bear with us, but please also understand that it was made very clear to me at the announcement when the train returned that if we don't have the folks getting on the train, that within a very short, if we don't have the ridership within six to eight months, we might see it disappear again. So I know it's a bit of a chicken and egg, but we are working on ensuring that the schedule is adhered to. Please bear with us and please do support the train, especially if you've got some flexibility in your schedule and you don't have to be somewhere right at nine A M. It's a very, very important asset to maintain in the community. I also wanted to give a brief update on the Walkin Clinic, the last update I received from Northumberland County around some of the technical aspects of the clinic seem to be ironed out. And we're looking at a third week startup time for the clinic. We will provide more information widely and publicly as soon as I have the exact date, but we're finally, finally getting to the end of that process. Also another update on the youth wellness hub. There have been two advertised positions now out, one for a project manager to do the construction and renovations of the hub. Another is for care coordinator, which is basically a hub manager rebound is advertising both those positions and hope to have all those in place very, very soon. And we're also continuing to look for anybody who would like to volunteer their time in terms of construction, carpentry, any other talents or skills or any other resources for the hub. They'll be looking for those volunteers and for those donations moving forward. But I do see that the momentum is really starting and we'll see some some progress in the next few months and events will continue to, to happen in the hub before it is fully, fully operational. So look at for those and those will be overseen by, by the hub manager. Moving on to childcare in our community. Sometimes things take a long time, but after more than a year and a half of negotiating, pressing upon Northumberland County, I'm, I'm really pleased to announce that there's going to be one hundred and eighty one new childcare spaces across Northumberland this year. And two, two of those spots are actually right here in Port Hope. One will be at the Ruth Clark Center, the old Ruth Clark Center, and the second will be in Canton. So the, the Ruth Clark Activity Center location is being planned in partnership with the Ganaraska Childcare Center and it'll support seventy new childcare spaces by the fall of twenty twenty four. The Canton Hub will be renovated to accommodate forty nine new spaces. And that's going to be located at fifty three twenty five County Road Ten. This is a significant, significant development for our community. I want to put out a very special thank you to Director Snook for all of the additional work and effort that you put into this, even though it is a county responsibility, the municipality really came forward in a, in a very meaningful way in terms of partnership. And I also want to thank our C A O, Candace White, for helping to get this across the line. I love the, this. We will get it done, no matter what the obstacles are. And there were many obstacles to have this realized. And I think it's it's a very, very important development for this community. So thank you to the staff and looking forward to ribbon cuttings to both of these. Now my task is to make sure that they'll be open by September of twenty twenty four, which will be almost two years to the date that we started working on this. And you know, I also wanted to say that this was something that I heard at the county table that Port Hope had not got its just desserts in terms of childcare spaces. But it was an initiative that was also, especially the Canton location, was driven by Counselor Andrews. And without his effort and his attention to this, none of this would have happened as well. So I think this is a really great moment for, for the community. And we look forward to being at the ribbon cutting ceremony. And we still have many, many more spaces that are required in our community as we grow. But it's definitely a good step in, in the right direction. And the very final update is that I will be attending a meeting at Alderville Nation tomorrow on the invitation of Chief Simpson to talk about the idea of legal personhood for the Ganaraska River Forest and for Rice Lake. It is a very initial, initial discussion. He has invited a number of the surrounding nations and, and myself for, for just an information session. It's a very short meeting, but I hope to be able to report back on this to this council table, especially if we've been concerned with some of the fishing practices in the Ganaraska River. I hope that this will be something that the municipality might consider partnering on, should Alderville decide to take the lead on this with other surrounding nations and be happy to, to come back with a more fulsome report on this when we next meet. Now, moving on, do council members have any updates or new business? Yes, Counsel, Counselor Claire and Deputy Mayor.
I wanted to provide a quick update on the development of the Climate Action Plan. And to thank everyone who did come to the public session that we had at Town Park Recreation Centre. But also just to update the community that some of the, the opportunities to interact with the potential plan and to provide your ideas is being hosted at the Public Library, the Mary J Benson Branch for the next two weeks. So if you weren't able to come down to the session a couple of weeks ago and you'd still like to have a say and learn more about it, you can visit the Public Library and add your voice.
Terrific. Any other updates or, or news? Okay. Now we move on to question period. It's now time for question period. Remember, question period is for questions only. And is an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions of council. Please ask your questions direct. It's not an avenue to ask questions to staff. And I am going to start making a very concerted effort. If it is a question that is appropriate for a staff response, we will be reporting the question and passing on that question to staff to get back to you with fulsome and full information. So with that, if you do have a question, you can come up and identify your name and provide us with your address and ensure the purple button is on. But before we get there, are there any questions? Yes, Counselor Claire, Deputy Mayor.
I apologize. You may not allow this because it's actually a question. But it's a question that I did tell the C A O I'd be asking her this evening. It is a question that a number of residents have been asking is when can we expect to have a public update on the fishing?
Oh, Mike, please.
Director Snook and I have had this conversation and she has prepared an update for you.
So thank you for the question. So the Salmon Working Group continues to meet. We meet on a monthly basis now. Moving forward, in the past, it was kind of prior to the season and just following the season. And the focus has been twofold. The focus has been what initiatives can we review on an annual basis and put forward from a planning standpoint? And the secondary is the regulatory option that the ministry has indicated that they are undertaking. So related to the initiatives that we, that the Salmon Group is looking at for twenty twenty four continues to have focuses related to enhancements for enforcements. So previous conversations with the ministry as well as our Port Hope Police Services who made the commitment in the past for enforcements along the river. Since the pandemic, there was a changeover of, of staff who had that training and certification. So early in June, we did host in collaboration with the ministry and the Port Hope Police Services, an update for that training. So additional officers are now able to issue citations under the Fisheries Act. Another component with that in partnership with our Protective Services Department is our bylaw officers also participate. is our bylaw officers also participated in that training. Uh, with bylaw, they, they have uh different opportunities um with some limitations with citations, but they are trained more so in the awareness and uh ability to have conversations with people if there are infractions along the river. So really strong uh updates related to enforcements. We've seen in the past with enforcements on the river that, that has been successful. We are also through our communications plan. Um, one of the things we would like to highlight, we're developing a communications plan uh collaboratively with members of the working group, is um, there were comments last year, you know, we didn't see enforcements along the river. Um, so from a ministry standpoint, uh, there are also uh items that we'd like to highlight from a communications that plainclothed officers are also on the river. So being aware of that from a community standpoint is, is something that we're considering with our communication plan. Um, the other aspect uh with initiatives is uh related to uh education and outreach. Um, every year, our education kind of changes uh about some of the, the considerations for. In the past, we focused on the life cycle of a salmon and this, the different species, uh, the protection of the species, the importance um from, you know, access to the river. So our outreach this year, our focus is going to be uh, the OFA H is planning on leading uh foot outreach along the river and tying that with a collaborative uh approach with the municipality of rolling out uh opportunity for uh volunteers to be engaged with more active uh cleanup along the river on a more frequent basis. So instead of waiting till the end of the season, um, kind of working with OFA H. So we have ground, feet on the ground, uh, OFA H staff would be leading, you know, did you know or, you know, maybe what you're doing is crossing a line. Where's your, you know, do you have a license? So leaving the outreach to the agencies, um, but engaging a volunteer group to uh be cleaning up the river on a more regular basis. Hoping that uh some of the things that we have seen through conversations with OFA H as well is um, you know, a, a clean riverbank and clergy is a clean riverbank. Um, so that's kind of the focus from an outreach standpoint. Um, I'm doing a lot more talking than I thought I would, but here we are. Um, we're also collaborating with our uh, the, the organization that the municipality has retained related to destination marketing. So how we can tie when you're in our community, a lot of the feedback as well is um, when people are visiting our community, um, whatever activity they're doing, how do we connect them with businesses downtown? Um, so our destination marketing uh team has uh made some initial high-level uh recommendations that uh once we have them firm, I do plan on doing uh an update, a report with all of this information. I think likely the largest note of interest is the regulatory option. So the ministry did indicate earlier this uh spring that they are looking at a regulatory option uh review specifically for the Ganaraska River. Um, this information and this process is a prescribed process by the ministry. So when they have the availability uh and they're, you know, if they're working through their engagement, it's prescribed and they'll be able to give us that update when they're ready. So um, when information comes forward, I, I do plan on bringing that as a staff report uh for everyone's awareness.
Thank you. We'll await that last. Um, but great progress, great progress. Uh, and I do want to really amplify for the community that's been asking about this, about all the different steps that have been taken, so it's not status quo. This has been on the agenda for a number of months. There have been a number of important initiatives from the community meetings and consultations right through to the work that you've been leading on this um Director Snook. So I do want to put that as part of the public record that work has happened, work is continuing to happen and we, we know that this is an issue of priority for the community. Um, any other questions from around the table? Okay, uh, we don't have any media, any questions from the public this evening?
Hi, Ed White, Mill Street. Um, my question is, is more on communication. I hear a lot of talk about communication and how to get the public updated and, and different things like that. This is the agenda sheet for tonight's meeting. Um, we used to get agenda sheets for the, see uh, the committee of the whole meeting that were two and three pages long. And each individual counselor would tell everybody what was going on that week or those two weeks, what they were involved in, what was happening, any kind of correspondence that they were getting, any questions they were getting from the public, any kind of things that they wanted to get across to the people in uh, in town. Now I get a sheet with effectively nothing on it. What, what happened? Why, why on a committee of the whole meeting? Why don't I know what happened in the last two or three weeks? With Works in Engineering or Parks and Rec or Finance or a, any of the, any of the, the committees? Now you can say, oh, it's on such and such a website or something like that. Okay, well, maybe we all don't want to or don't able to, to work that, to get that. Maybe something like this could be the answer to um your communication issues. I know it would help me a lot because um I'd like to know what, what's going on? What recommendations? We've got uh, we've got all kinds of, of uh, of uh groups that, that give people the answers. Um, who decided that we weren't going to get these, these updates at the committee of the whole? Was it council that decided they didn't want to do it? Was it staff that decided? Was it so that we could have a meeting that only lasted forty-five minutes? Like I, I, I don't understand what happened when you've got a, a council that, that prides itself on communication and this is what we get. I, I just, I, I don't know. It's, it's their, um, our mayor just ran through a whole bunch of things that, that she's doing and she's involved in, but I don't know what everybody else is involved. I don't know what's going on with all the individual um committees and um portfolios and everything else. Um, it's just, that, that's where I'm at. I'm confused. I don't understand communications, wanting to have communications and then you cut back on communications, so.
Hey, thank you for the, the question, Ed. Um, I think that because actually we do have staff that uh are in place today that can speak to at least procedurally what does appear on our agendas and how we deal with updates and reports and communications on those agendas. I'm going to actually ask the, the clerk to make a comment on that and then I will um also ask the Deputy Mayor to speak to it.
So Ed, if I understand correctly, what you, uh, so if I understand your question correctly, um, you're talking about updates following a committee meeting with respect to what is happening with each of the standing committees as well as uh, you know, what each of the, which, each of the council members are, are doing as part of their role on council? Is that, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when we, when we eat it, we would have an agenda sheet and it would have uh the counselor's name and it would have the committee.
Yeah.
Over on.
Yeah.
And then there would be a list of, of uh either.
Yeah.
Correspondence or questions.
Yeah.
Or, or, or something like that for each individual.
Yeah, standing committee.
Section.
Yeah.
And then at the end of the, at the end of the thing, I mean, you could make notes and you could go, oh, I want to ask a question on, on that particular item.
Yep.
Um, I'm, I'm not one who delves into the, 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 I don't know what, what you want to call all the, all the media stuff on this, on, on the internet. I, I, I find it very difficult. I find, I find that the uh, the uh, the Port Hope uh website is very difficult to navigate. And I, I have a hard time. And I found that this was very easy and then I could find out where I wanted to ask a question.
Sure.
So all of a sudden now.
Yeah, yeah.
What happened?
Yep.
Um, you know, I mean, I, I know they're busy, okay?
Yeah.
I understand that, but according to this, they're not, they're.
Okay.
There's nothing, everything else, they're, they're not, you know, they're not responding, so.
Um, I think.
Whose decision was it?
Yeah.
Or is it a conscious decision or is there really nothing going on?
So, so Ed, let me, let me answer, because you're asking a series of different questions, some of which I will be able to answer. A few of them, I think, are, should really be resting with the council table. So uh in terms of the standing committees and the rotating chairs that used to take place at Committee of the Whole, that was under the previous procedural bylaw. So one of the decisions that was made back in October is that we were going to get rid of the rotating chairs. So what that means really is that at every committee of the whole meeting, you would have the mayor starting the meeting and then you would have each portfolio chair move through and uh, you know, start a standing committee for their particular portfolio and then go through any items that were there and then any new business that was there with respect to that particular portfolio. And then they would close, close that standing committee and then move on to the next portfolio. So that was the process that had been in place for quite some time here in the municipality of Port Hope. With the review of the procedure bylaw, with the kind of community engagement that we did, engagement that we did with the public as well as various different stakeholders, the determination was made that we were no longer going to have rotating chairs. This did not mean that we were, you know, removing items from the agenda. The items were still remaining the same, but they were just in, in order of whichever item uh was there. So if there was a series of finance reports, they would show up, series of uh, you know, parks reports, they would show up, but they would not be rotating chairs. So that is what the change was from a procedural perspective. Nothing was removed from the agendas at all, with the exception of a few changes that were made with the separation of the council and the committee hall. That was a scheduling change that was made. But in terms of the second question that you're asking about, what you, what each council member is working on and how you can get information from them, that is not a question I can ask, answer from a procedural perspective, but I can only, uh, I can only give you that feedback from, from, um, from the agenda change that took place from December of last year to January of this year.
What, what, what do you mean by rotating chairs?
Yes, so if you remember, yeah.
Uh, each, each counselor has a portfolio.
That's correct. Yeah.
They eat for.
Yeah.
The entire thing, so there's no rotation.
Yes, there is, there is rotation during a committee of the whole meeting. Because if you remember in, in twenty twenty-three and pre- previous to that, at any committee of the whole meeting, the, the chair was the mayor. She started the meeting, but then when it was time for uh, you know, Protective Services to, to have uh their items considered, it would have been the Chair of Protective Services that was, was responsible for managing that portion of the agenda, right? So that's what I mean by rotating chairs. Where in a committee of the whole meeting, you had several people who were chairing their portion of the meeting as opposed to having just one chair, which is what we have now.
Isn't that their job?
It is, it is a job of the chair to chair the meeting.
I'm not going to pick on anybody, but.
Yeah.
Let's just say we want to talk about Parks and Rec, okay? He's in charge of Parks and Rec. If things come in, then.
Yeah.
Okay, he's the, he's the council representative for Parks and Rec. And before, there used to be a, a, a thing where, where um that the, the Chair of Parks and Rec was here would give a report and the Chair of Finance would, would give a report on what happened in that control.
Ed.
Maybe we get up.
I, I just, I, I think that um, I think that what you're raising was, was something that was passed based on a staffer support by this council to change the way in which the committee of the whole meetings are operating. And, and if you recall too, on not every committee of the whole meeting, would there be reports that would be pertinent to any one portfolio? Nor during those sessions, would there necessarily be an open opportunity for you to ask questions of any one council member right after that? We all waited till the end for, for question periods. So there's still an opportunity to ask any of the council members any questions that you might have that are related to, to their portfolios. That, that hasn't changed. But, yeah. Yep, and that's still, sorry, I'll, I'll let the clerk answer that.
So that, that still exists, Ed. So when there is a question period, the first thing that the mayor does is she asks council members whether they have any questions. So that process has not changed, it remains the same. So, so, yeah, but they, it's their, it's their prerogative to determine whether they wish to ask a question or not. It's their prerogative to determine whether they want to provide an update or not at that council meeting, right? There's several different avenues for providing communication. This is just one of them.
Uh, and I, the Deputy Mayor would like to make one final comment.
Thank you, Ed. Um, I just wanted to give you a tangible example from this evening. So, sorry, you can't hear me? Okay, is there something wrong with my mic? No? Okay, so I was going to say a tangible example from this evening is I provided an update about the Climate Action Plan. I provided that update just like I would have before under Works in Engineering, only I did it uh under the single of, you know, update and other business section of the agenda. So there's an example, I'm doing the same thing. It's just in a different order on the agenda, but we still do have those opportunities. But I also did want to say, because we haven't, maybe not tonight, but that could just be because of where we are in the calendar and what's happening. But I did also want to point out that this is a new procedural bylaw and we're, we're testing this. There's some things that we're doing differently and we're either going to decide that those things are working for us or they're not. And it is going to be reviewed. I'm looking at the clerk for confirmation towards the end of this year to ensure that it's working for us. So some of the questions that you're asking are really helpful and maybe keep those in mind as we move forward with the rest of the year so that we can incorporate that feedback and take a look on whether there's tweaks we want to make to the new agenda structure so that it is more clear to members of the public how those things are happening.
Hey, thank you. And we have um one last question, I believe.
Jim Skolthorpe, sixteen eighty-five, Lobe Troad. The last question was excellent. I really miss the opportunity to listen to every one of my counselors speak about their portfolio. It is very difficult now. We're not allowed to ask questions at council unless we put a written question in. None of you have stood up and spoken about your portfolios. And I think that is a huge detriment to all the people that are watching that camera. And there are a lot of them. I get so many questions about people who are watching tonight. And we have all of you being elected, but have heard from very few of you about your portfolios. And it is important for you to stand up and tell us what you are doing with your staff behind you. So my question is, yes, you told me you were going to try this. I don't think it's working. I think you need to make a decision sooner than January because you're going to miss the opportunity to support all the people that are watching.
Hey, thank you for the, for the feedback. And certainly, as was already mentioned today, we're in a trial period with this and we're collecting feedback and really appreciate your comments and your concerns about the, the new process.
One last question to the Deputy Mayor. I still haven't heard about that one point three million dollar thirty-five-hundred gallon tanker for our fire department.
Sorry, what, what do you want, what is it that you want to know?
I want to know, it's not a one point three million dollar water tanker. There's got to be something more to it than that and there's been no, I, you said you would get me that information.
I apologize. Yeah, I apologize. You're right. I did, uh, I did answer the question as it was asked online and shared some details from the budget uh last year about what that uh truck is. I apologize, I did not email that to you and I should have because I know that you're not on social media and I should have done that and I apologize. But we do have, uh, if you're sticking around, the person who could really speak intelligently. But we do have, uh, if you're sticking around, the person who could really speak intelligently about that is in the room this evening. Um, so.
I know.
Yeah. But I apologize. You're right. And.
Other people that know about it.
Thank you for calling me out on that.
Thank you for that question. And I'm sure that, uh, Director Williams would be, uh, happy to chat with you about that. Counselor Les.
I'd like to go back to Ed and, uh, Jim's, uh, comments on, uh, council and their ability and capability of speaking. And I, and I have to agree with you. Uh, the old method, uh, may have been a little inefficient, um, from a timing point of view. Um, but at least, you know, if we had something to say, we, we got to say it. And it sort of put us on the spot so that we didn't want to look like dummies by not having, week after week, having nothing to say. I mean, like, there is always something going on that we could comment on. And when we went to this new procedural bylaw and the splitting of the, uh, council and the committee of the whole meetings, um, I for one was, was, was against it. Uh, I felt that we could more efficiently cover in two meetings, we're trying to accomplish in three, uh, over the, the span of one month. Um, so I would like to see us review it and, and, you know, I'm kind of in favor of going back to the old method.
Thank you, Counselor Les. And, uh, we are in a process of, of implementation and, and review. And so it's good to have this, uh, these discussions and questions and comments from, from the public. So we, we appreciate that very much. So there are no many, no more questions from the public. So this concludes our business to be covered on today's agenda. And I'm in a position to adjourn the meeting of the Committee of the Whole this evening at 7:22 P M. Thank you very much, everybody who attended.